Perfect, I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular session of council for the town of Greater Napanee this 12th day of September 2023. I just want to remind everyone that this evening's meeting is going to be recorded and livestreamed to the town of Greater Napanee YouTube channel. So having said that, we'll look, we'll call the the meeting to order. We'll start off with our closed session, rise and report. I'll look for a motion to rise and report from closed session moved by councillor Pinal, seconded by councillor Hicks. All in favor of that motion? If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, opposed, motions carried. I'd like to report from the closed session that council this evening approved the closed session minutes from August 29th, 2023. Received two reports regarding personal information about identifiable individuals and gave direction to staff. Received a report regarding the third party confidential information and negotiations to be carried on by the municipality with the third party and gave direction to staff and received a report regarding OLT dash 22 dash 003833 and gave directions to staff. Having said that, we'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. And I'll read the amendment out here shortly moved by councillor Martin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver and the agenda is going to be amended with the addition of the closed session report SR two dash 290 dash 2023 and the correspondence item 8.2.1. I think we need to vote on that, don't we? Madam Clerk, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, we'll have a public meeting. I'll look for a motion to convene the public meeting this evening. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by councillor Pinal, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. And I believe, Madam Clerk, I think you're up for this one, are you not?
So through your worship, there is also a the first staff report on this agenda tonight deals with this, but this is part two of an application that was started in 2022. This process is required to hear if there are any persons who'd be adversely impacted by the proposed closure and transfer of the road allowances in question. We do not believe there are any. There is, I don't believe anyone in the body here tonight to speak to this application, but if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you for reminding me. Is there anybody in the body of the council chambers to speak for or against the matter that we have here this evening? Seeing none, and just for clarification that the public meeting is with respect to land near 10 665 Loyal's Parkway described as part 4th, 5th and 6th Street and part of an unnamed road allowance on Plan 60 at Alphastown. And if memory serves you right, Madam Clerk, this is a matter that probably originated in the late 1890s or early 1900s.
Through your worship, that is correct. This is a very, very old plan of subdivision that we were not able to date, but were able to determine that it has been in existence for a very long time, obviously never developed because this is all still farmland.
Yep, great, thanks, Madam Clerk. Is there anyone that wishes to have any discussion with respect to that? Seventeen eighty-four is that point? Seventeen eighty-four, so goes back even further than I thought then. Thank you, councillor Shank. Well, it sounds like probably before the country is even in existence, so. If there's no further conversations or discussions with respect to this at this public meeting, we'll look for a motion or a resolution to adjourn the public meeting this evening, moved by councillor Hicks, seconded by councillor Pinal. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Deputations, and I do believe we may have a registered deputation. I think Mr. Chestnut is going to do a deputation this evening with respect to the Emerald Ash Board. So come on up, Jeff. Both the microphones are on there, so and I just asked if he could speak into them because I know we can hear you very clear here. It's just the folks at home that are going to have difficult hearing if you don't speak into them, and I know that they're on, so go ahead. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and fellow councillors and Napanee staff. My name's Jeff Chestnut, if you didn't know, and I was first brought to attention to this. I was asked to go down and do some gardening advice for a couple who had moved into the country and was living down on the bay. And when I was down there, I noticed that the invasive grapevine we have already in our province was growing up their trees. And all their hardwoods were dead, giant hardwoods, and I kind of stupidly said, oh, Dutch elm disease, you guys really got hit with it because growing up in Toronto, I was quite familiar with Dutch elm. Once I started looking around, and I'm sure after tonight, if you look around the fields and along the roadways, you're really going to start noticing this if you start really paying attention. I noticed the death of trees around here is like staggering and looking in the Emerald Ash for it's been around, there's the creature up there. It's been around since 2002, they believe. I got my reading glasses here, so. So it strictly affects the ash tree, and you might ask, what's what's the ash tree to our municipality? First of all, it plays a big part in indigenous life around here. It's a unique tree that was used in basket making and also is a tree that can be burnt right after you cut it, unlike other trees that need to be cured before you start burning it. So it was a useful wood for the indigenous and first peoples. It also was used to make furniture, pots, cabinets and flooring in our area in the past. It was also used, like I said, to replace Dutch elm disease which hit Toronto, north of Toronto very severely. And as if you're at all familiar, once a tree of that size starts dying, it sits there for a while and all of a sudden, all the little roots die and the soil will let go and the whole thing comes down and you're left with a root problem as well as the tree falling. Green and black ash grow in our wetlands and the leaves feed tide poles and siatus flies and aquatic organisms, but one of the reasons supposedly our frog populations dropping down for all those who are into fishing and that is their food is vanishing. We just don't see it because it sits at the bottom of the water. The ashes also, the root base helps change the pH level of the soil, so it allows other hardwoods to grow instead of just, that's why we've had such a unique forest through in this area. Compared to our wetlands, we have both hardwoods and softwoods, and we can thank the ash for that. If they all die, this is going to change and other trees are going to start getting sick and dying too. A little side point here, we have to remember the ash is a tree that has both male and female sexes. And after the die-off, we're going to have to be able to identify which trees are where to maybe help get get the trees going again. So like I, like I said, it's an invasive species from Asia. It's in Japan, Korea, China, they just happen to have ash sporadically, so it doesn't hit them like a hit here. Here we have one third of our bushes is ash and the bug just went right through it like wildfire. Sorry, there's, there's what an ash looks like if we have any identifying things. One, one thing I'd point out is we have this, we have this belief that the internets are savior. And so when this, when this bug hit in 2002, the federal government immediately put up on their Ministry of Forestry webpage and 1-800 number. I'm sure no one here called it, just like I didn't. Now, the provincial government, seeing that the federal government didn't do anything, has also put a 1-800 number up. And that went up, I believe it was November 2002. So it's great that we get this information out, but if people aren't going to the webpages, then then what's the point of putting it up? It really, it was purposeless and we're going to go with the solution that everything dies first because we're kind of caught in that trap now. So there is almost a thousand species that use the ash tree for food and places to live, wood mice, wrens, bats, lichen, the lichen on the tree feeds other beetles that are native to here and they don't kill the tree, but without the lichen, they will cease to exist, which goes down the chain again. And I would point out that invasive species have really hit this area hard. We had zebra mussels and another creature that eats the seeds are ducks and turkeys. And so our hunting will be affected, and if you've seen the park, the duck populations may be a tenth of what it was 10 years ago, and that's because the seeds that sit at the bottom of the water are no longer there to eat. So like I said, it was brought in with shipping crates. Well, we have no, we check things coming in and out of our country, but we rarely check the pallets that they come in on. And we're, we're not sterilizing pallets. We're not collecting pallets after they're used. And they feed their way out into our municipality. We have different crafty carpenters using them. We have different people using them for firewood. You, I have a neighbor using it as a fencing material, but we're bringing in these these species into our backyards by allowing these kids to go out in the community because this is just one bore. There's also the birch bore and there's a maple disease going through. So there really are forests are being attacked hard. I did find that we had done a report in Napanee Thursday, April 30th, 2020. Wayne Taylor, Director of Public Works and Facility did a report and found it recognized our large ash population. It noted hiring contractors to remove hazardous trees from the area. Now, here's, here's driving out to Deserano along Highway 2. And I, I think the third picture there, you can really see the example of how bad the bush, it has died back. This also doesn't attract people when they're coming to look for properties either. The one picture I didn't get very good, but that's a tree that's sticking out onto Highway 2 right now. And there's the other bush line, as you see in the background, a whole line because they only kept the ash trees because that's what held in the soil as a hardwood. So we got the, the adult is a metallic green, eight and a half millimeters long and one or 1.6 millimeters wide, but can also have a copper hue. As you can see in the background, it gets in behind the, it gets in behind the bark and it starts zigging and zagging until the bark literally falls like an over oversized coat and it just falls away from the tree. And once, once a tree is 30% dead, it's dead. There's no saving it. The only way to save the trees was to give them an injection and to also inject any dead wood that was on property. We just had Hydro go through recently, this as recently as last week and cut down a bunch of trees. And I'm not sure if you've gotten the phone calls yet, but I saw on Facebook a few people quite shocked to have their tree chopped down on their property and then left there. But that's actually the federal law. It can't leave the property and people are selling this as firewood. We are building with it. We're selling it with as firewood and we're infecting our own trees by passing it around. It really needs an incentive to have the people burn it right there, whether we set barrels on the property that they can burn it in, but really that these trees aren't supposed to leave the property by federal law and are supposed to be burnt. They are not supposed to be used for furniture or anything else. Once again, you have to go to the Ministry of Forestry to find some of this out and we're not all aware of it. This, this tree is at Springside Park and this is where I have some of my biggest issue, I guess, that I think should get dealt with. 10 of the 12, 10 to 12 trees along the south side of the river are completely dead. This is why there's no ducks at our park. Their, their food supply is dead. And as you see, once one invasive species hit, the cormorants come in instead of our ducks that we're used to, our herons, and they start eating fish supply. And we go down the troubled path and we're going to have more of this as ships come through into Picton. And we have large cruise ships coming off with 5,000 people at a time. We're going to see more invasive species. But I would point out that I think we need to replace some of these trees, and I don't mean with the sapling. These roots are going to die in the ground and flip up all along the path. And if you go down there, you're going to see the majority of them are dead. We just really haven't paid attention. And I would point out that the invasive grapevine is going to kill the species up in the bush line by choking it off is that's all that's hanging there. And we only have maybe one oak left that's shedding acorns for animals deep down at the park, up in that bush line. One, here, here we are in the park and these are the shape our trees are in. All along as you walk through the, walk through the, the park, it's really kind of a look of death. Here's some more of the, the impacts of the bug, but really there isn't, isn't too much we can do at this point. You have to allow it to peek out and there will be certain ash trees that survive this. This is where we have to have something in plan that our larger property owners come and say, hey, I have a large ash tree on my property and we have to have someone of knowledge that knows if it's a male or a female ash and we can assist it in the regrowth program. I'd say like you could, you could make an endless budget, but this has to probably come out of roadworks and different, different parts of our budget already because if we don't, you're just going to end up with, as you see, the trees are falling already. And you're going to have to send crews out on weekends to look after this and it'll be more costly just to continue to ignore it. You also have the problem with animals fencing around here. We recently realized how much of a farming community we have. Sometimes we forget about this. I was out at the morning at the farm, great, great experience. This, this is going to be problematic for farmers too with animals getting out of fields. If you have a storm in a tree or a limb falls and knocks your fencing down, we're going to have definite soil impact and erosion and the change in pH level. There'll be a lack of food and you're, we're going to introduce other, other species. One thing I would differ from our last report because I think we're in a much different position. To leave the bush alone without thinning it would be to expect a century before you get any recovery. So if we had some initiative where people thin down some of the dead limbs and, and even if they have paths in that for their own safety, it would be good. It's good to leave dead trees. It's helping our woodpeckers. It's helping other species with living areas and we used to cut too many of our dead trees down, which isn't a good thing either. So I don't think we need to go and get rid of every tree, but they need to get them down, especially in some public areas because we saw this year what forest fire does. And that would be my, my next point. We have two homeless communities out in our bushes. They, there is mental illness, there is large drug use and there's winter coming and there's a lot of dead trees all around them. And if you look into Berry into Kingston, tent fires are a horrendous problem with, with the homeless communities and we can stick our noses in the sand and forget about this, but we do have two that I know of and probably a third one and the one community is suffering from large mental illness where people are hanging their clothing from these dead trees. So this is an issue. It's not a fear mongering. In, in Quebec, they, they've started handing out $2,000 fines for people who plant ash trees. And you kind of say, well, that's beaten up on a citizen for planting a tree. This is more for developers. Because if we end up with a subdivision with an ash tree on every property, you're going to have a problem because they're just going to die. We need to stop anyone from planting infected trees and with a bit more research, I could get you another list. We have another problem where our nurseries in Ontario are selling invasive species. So maybe something with a bit more teeth to make sure that the plants were selling in our area. And it's not so much your ma and pa nurseries, it's more kind of your Walmart nurseries where they get mass things brought in and they don't have the skilled staff. They're there to sell you something. There's my, there's my references. I think though, in kind of summing up here, we need to get citizen awareness. We need to probably bring this problem to kids as kids are the greatest tool. It helped us start where it's wearing seat belts. It helped us start recycling. So I think we need to bring kids into our environment and our municipality. We, we need to try and create incentives for people to thin large bands of this, so other trees and have may trees that are going to also add to our environment like oaks that have acorns and that. If not, you're going to see in town, lots of walnuts are getting passed around because there's been a few walnut trees and the squirrels are passing the nuts around because that's their only food now. And walnuts have bring their own problems with them. I, I think that the town should look into a bylaw for landscapers dealing with the ash tree. So you don't have a headache down the, the road. I thought maybe a thousand dollars to 2,000 range. So it still had teeth, but you had, you could play a bit with it and, and just to get the severity of the problem to developers. There should be a very a bylaw that this wood should not be leaving the property because people are selling it right now. And I think we should come up with some form of immediate way that people can burn it because Hydro did go and cut down a bunch of trees, didn't tell anyone. Right? And I get why they did it and I get it's the people's trees. It's on their lot and they probably don't want Hydro to clean it up because they charge you. But there are some elderly people that are left scratching their head, wondering what to do with this mess that's been left behind on their property. So that, that is my, my deputation and I know that the town has talked about it before, but I kind of think maybe it's gotten buried with. So that, that is my, my deputation and I, I know that the town has talked about it before, but I kind of think maybe it's gotten buried with. With COVID and, uh, forgotten about and maybe should get addressed again.
Yep. Great. Thanks, Jeff. Does anybody have any questions, uh, for Jeff with respect to his deputation? Go ahead, Counselor. Uh, thank you worship, uh, through you. Jeff, thank you very much for coming in and giving us this report. Um, I can remember back in my career prior to, to what I do now, I had to ship a piece of equipment to China. And I had to have all the wood, the skid, heat treated documentation, stamps on the wood and all that sort of stuff. And yet with the way that, uh, our purchasing ways are nowadays, we're importing all this stuff. And I don't remember seeing stamps on wood like you were saying.
Like what's happening honestly is the skids are looked at as a nuisance. And that's why they just give them away and they'd rather build new skids than use old skids.
In, in your research, um, because obviously you've, you've done a great job in researching this. Is there any way of getting rid of this? This species, uh, other than starving it?
No. No, it, it actually has hit the West Coast now unexpectedly. It skipped through Alberta and it's in Oregon. And that, and it's made its way to the West Coast. This is why, this is the forest fires in Quebec. This is why they burnt so. Hard, so fast is, uh, you, you have all this dead ash in Quebec as well, in, in Northern Quebec. And that's the, the point is you have different things. We have a lot of swamp area around here. So you have spontaneous combustion with Willow of the Whisper, whatever, uh, swamp gas lighting up. And it is a factor like it does catch stuff on fire if it's, it's a big enough gas release.
Thanks, Counselor. Now Counselor X.
Uh, just through you, your worship. So at the last meeting of the, um, Cataracway Conservation, Cataracway Regional Conservation Area. Um, I'm on the board there and there was a really good presentation where they're using, um, parasoidal wasps.
Yes.
That they're bringing in, um, and releasing in areas. So I know looking at our, my personal property, my husband and I. They would never release them there because the ash trees are dead. Like there's no bringing those back, but they do these assessments and then they release. And I, I think it's upwards of 10 million.
Yeah.
Uh, at a time, which is a rather scary thought for me. But they are making attempts, but it's not going to, it's basically, they're going to have to starve them out. Is, is I think what's eventually going to happen. But if you are interested, I will send you, um, that report.
If, if I could have one, I know we're doing renovations in here and there is one. If I had my choice, I would add one seat, if not two here, but the one seat I would add is, is a representation to our environment around us. We, we have been snowed by both this and, uh, zebra mussels in the nineties, the cormorants coming up the river. There's multiple things that if we keep ignoring it. Like I, I believe our river is really the attraction that brings people in from other areas. It's really truly my belief, but as wildlife diminishes and. If the homeless issue becomes a problem in the park, it will, it will end.
Uh, thanks, Jeff. Is there any other questions or comments for, uh, Mr. Chestnut? Seeing none and, uh, thanks, Jeff. I, I know that we as a corporation have recognized the fact that we have. A, an abundance of dead ash trees here. And I know we on a regular basis get, uh, calls or, or reports from the public with respect to them. And I know personally, as, as Counselor Hicks has said, I've got probably 20 or 25 on my property alone that, that, uh, are now dead and understanding they're going to have to be removed. So it is a huge problem. And, and just so you know, I was probably one of the very few that ever used the 800 number 20 years ago because I called them. Because I found a dead ash tree and I found one of them goofy little green bugs on it. And a week and a half later, somebody came out and. Didn't really think that's what it was, but, uh, it should be okay. But it's, it, that's what it was.
Good examples at the park of how the bark comes down off one of the trees.
Very much so. And, and, and this, this problem has migrated from the South, probably 25 years ago.
Yeah, Detroit area.
And, uh, and, and at that point now, you know, we're aware that we're going to lose probably 95% of the ash trees in, in, in this country, right? So, uh, and, and through saplings and, and some of the seedlings that have been naturally planted. I mean, and I think it will make a comeback, but I have to agree with Counselor Hicks that, uh, um, probably starvation of, of this insect. Or unless we have an overabundance of woodpeckers that, uh, start to influx into this area, that, uh, that's probably the only way we're going to deal with that. But we are as a corporation aware of, of the dead trees, both on public properties and on people's private lands. And, uh, it's going to be a quickly and fast to try and get rid of them, but, uh, but we're going to keep working on it. So, but, uh, thank you very much for coming in and, uh, and then bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
If, if there's nothing further, we'll look for motion to note and receive, uh, the deputation of Mr. Chestnut with respect to the Admiral Ashford. Go ahead, uh, moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Is there any unscheduled deputations that someone would like to, uh, speak to tonight? Mr. Wilson, did you have, uh, something you'd like to, 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 uh, bring before council?
He just said here tonight that fits right in, but what I wanted to bring up was we've already got another tree come down here. Just missed the fish hatch tree, went right through the flower bed, about four feet out into where people.
Yeah. And, and, and we, we, I think we're aware of that. I mean, I know our public works aware of it because there's, there's a lot of blowdown down there as well. So, um, hopefully in the not too distant future, we can see if we can put some attention because, uh, it really is a, a, a natural wonder that we have down there along Springside Park. So, and now seeing, um, seeing some movement with the Gilbert project, it's only going to get better. So, but, uh, thank you. Uh, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Uh, have we called for the vote yet? Madam Clerk? No, we've got a mover and a seconder. All in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried and, um, we'll move on to adoption of the minutes. We'll look for a motion for the adoption of the minutes for the regular session of council on the 29th of August, 2023. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Penal. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Uh, correspondence for information. I, I know we've, uh, had some correspondence for information that's been presented to us prior to this evening. Is there anything somebody would like to, uh, to remove from that bunch of correspondence? And have a discussion about? If not, we'll do, uh, we'll note, receive all under one motion. Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the correspondence, uh, for information. With respect to September 12th, 2023, moved by Counselor Penal, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for action. Proclamation. We have a proclamation request from the national, for National Legion Week. And I believe Counselor Norrie would like to speak to this.
Thank you, your worship. I received a call from, uh, the President, Vicki Samstrom of our legion. And basically the description is the Ontario Provincial Command of the Royal Canadian Legion represents nine districts. It includes 390 branches with 89,000 members. For the first time, Legion Week will be celebrated nationally. The proclamation is therefore let it be known in the town of Greater Napanee. That September the 17th to the 23rd, 2023, be proclaimed National Legion Week by the Royal Canadian Legion.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie, within the town of Greater Napanee. So we'll look for a motion to, uh, uh, proclaim the week of. September 17th to 2023, National Legion Week, moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business, uh, anyone would like to speak to tonight? Seeing none, staff reports, road closure and conveyance, punctured application. And I believe Madam Clerk will be speaking of that.
So through your worship, uh, the report before you describes the request that is being made. Ideally, we would have had a bylaw tonight to go along with this, but we are just waiting for, um, some final information from the. Land Registry Office before we can do that. So instead the proposal is that council approves this application in principle. Once we get that, uh, survey information finalized, that bylaw will show up on a future council meeting, hopefully in the not too distant future.
Great. Thanks, Madam Clerk. Is there any questions for Madam Clerk before we look for a motion? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion and I believe we have a recommendation, um, to approve, uh, the road closure and direct, uh, the closure and conveyance by law to be brought forward. Once sufficient survey information is obtained, moved by.
Moves to have recommendations.
Staff recommendation. Thanks, Counselor Shank. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Financial services, sale of 45, uh, commercial court. And I believe Mr. Murphy's coming up. Go on up.
Through your worship, I don't have anything to add at this point in time, but I fully expect a few questions. So I'll, I'll go from there, I guess.
Great. Thanks, Nathan. Is there any questions for Nathan? I know that we dealt with this, or at least we started, uh, to deal with this at our last, uh, session of council. Does, does anybody have any questions with respect to, go ahead, Counselor Penal?
I think you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that and going through you. And Nathan, uh, you and I had a discussion on this earlier today. So I just wanted to bring this up for clarification, um, on the staff report for people who, uh, may have read it. Or, or about to read it. So people watching this at home, when we look at the, um, the numbers that you provided, the sale of property was 1.5 million dollars. And at the end of the day, after we do our calculations, we have 965,000 dollars, uh, left to divvy up between. Uh, utilities or, or to the purchase of 99. There seemed to be when I was doing my numbers that there was 470,000 dollars that didn't appear on this. And between your and my discussion and, uh, council was copied on all of this. Is that the assessed value of that building was 730,000 dollars and the accumulated depreciation. Was 260,000. So therefore, if you take, uh, the 260 away from 730, that's the 470. You, you assured me that that 470,000 dollars will be going into our general ledger and to our general account.
Through you, your worship, uh, that, that is correct. Um, the money. As presented in the report, we do receive all of those funds into our general bank account. It is a disbursement through accrual accounting as to why we don't have that all going to the proceeds. So yes, in short.
Great. Thank you. I, I feel a lot better now that we've had that discussion because I, I, I do like numbers and I just couldn't see where that was. But I, I thank you very much. I'll see if anybody else on council has anything else to ask, but I do have a couple more afterwards. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Penal. Is there anybody else has any questions with respect to Nathan's report or presentation? If not, we'll let, uh, Counselor Penal go again. Seeing none, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Worship, or your worship. Uh, we're just going to go back to, uh, pre, pre, uh, 99 advance. We had discussions of purchasing the building. And, uh, I'm not sure how it happened, but I was led to believe that the proceeds from buildings, uh, sale of buildings will be going. Towards the purchase of 99. Um, I believe there must be a resolution on the books for that. Um, when we sell 45 commercial court. It's determined that, uh, this building, uh, the proceeds must go to utilities or, or a major portion of it. Uh, because, uh, it was bought with utilities funds. I don't believe that I would have ever put my hand up if I've known that. Or I should have at least been known, made known of that prior to us putting our hands up to buy that building. Because this 965,000, uh, would have made a, a good repayment towards that building. As a matter of fact, uh, the, the million and 30 would have even been better. So I have a little bit of an issue with, uh, what's being asked in here, how we want to divide this up. I'm looking at it from all sides and I understand that we're going to have some good conversations here as soon as I'm done regarding why this should go to utilities. Um, but I also, um, I just want to say that we can have either all of it go to the purchase of 99, which I know I'm going to lose that. Uh, or one third, or we can adjust at one third going to 99 and two thirds going to utilities. But I think that in the light of things, the only thing that would be fair is if we did 50 50 split on this. I know at the end of the day, it all is, uh, the town money and it goes into, uh, into our. Uh, into our bank accounts on that, but I think that's the, the right thing will be, uh, in my mind, because, uh, as I was led to believe that the sales go to purchase or to that purchase. Also, um, there is a, an issue with the rent that's being backpaid to. The new owners of 45 so that we could still use some area, uh, the garage portion of it until the garage is built over at the new site. And that's estimated to be around 80,000 dollars. In the report that was given to us in August the 29th. Uh, in the calculations, it showed that, uh, it more than likely the 80,000 would be taken off the proceeds of 965. Leaving eight 85 to be split up, uh, in this report, one third and two thirds. And I believe that if it's going to be utilities using that space. That the rent comes out of their portion of it after the split's been done. And I'm open to hear it from rest of council now. Thanks.
Counselor Martin, go ahead.
Absolutely. You're going to hear from me, Counselor Penel. I'm not going to apologize for, uh, looking after the interests of utility customers in, in Napanee. That building was purchased originally. Money came from the utilities capital budget, I believe. And we as utility customers pay our water and sewer bill every two months. That's where that money came from. I don't however, object to one third, two thirds, because again, as your 80,000 dollars, uh, you alluded to, I, I think, uh, it's more than fair by giving one third to. The, uh, debt on 99 advance. I definitely want to see, uh, 99 advance paid off, but, um, again, we have to look after who paid the bill. And who paid the bill was everybody that gets a water and sewer bill here. The rural, rural rate payers did not pay a penny for that building at the time. So. That's where I stand on that. And yeah, you're going to get an argument from me every time you bring that up.
Good, Counselor Penel.
I think you worship, I rebuttal to that. Then, uh, then i- if we were going to, um, consider your stance on this. Counselor Martin, then I would, would, would have think that maybe you should go for the 470,000 dollars as well. Um, because that's the, uh, the assessed value of the property and the, um, the depreciated value of that property as well. And those monies are just going into the general account. So, um, I live in town. We pay water and sewer as well. So it's not that I'm speaking of, but I, I just think that, um, if we're going to use that argument, then you should be going for the extra monies as well.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Through you, Mayor. Um, if you want to give me the extra 470,000, sure, we'll, we'll take it. That doesn't make any sense to me at all, what you're saying, but, uh, I, I, I'm trying to give one third of the money to help pay off 99 Advance Avenue. I think that's again, being more than fair. And I, I, I don't see any, any reason why we shouldn't be able to settle on that amount. I don't understand where you're coming up with the 50 50. One third, two thirds is more than fair.
Thanks, uh, Counselor Martin. I believe, uh, Counselor Shank wanted to weigh in. Go ahead, Mike.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Nathan, but every municipality in Ontario does accrual accounting. They don't do a cash based accounting. Problem is, is a lot of times, uh, children were, and as we grow into adults, a lot of people don't understand accrual accounting. All right. Cash based accounting, basically, you know, yeah, you got paid a dollar, you bought a pop for 50 cents, you got 50 cents back. Well, the accrual accounting with a depreciation and everything else that is, this is set by Ontario Minister of Finance and municipal. Municipalities all go by accrual accounting with assets. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is that correct? So there we go. That settles that problem, how we came up, how Nathan came up with the money, amount of money that we have. So now when we divvy it up. I'll say one thing. Sanders pays water bills too. I'll say one thing, Sanders pays water bills too, right Peter? Yeah, so there is, so even wherever you're on water and sewer, Sanders has your water filtration plant and everything else, so everybody paid towards that. The way it was split, the one-third, two-thirds, I feel is fair, all right? Sure, we had other functions besides the public utilities in there, but it's, it was a user pay system with the expansion that everything else is going on. I just feel that the one-third, two-third is just a fair way and is palatable for everybody. We could start splitting hairs and saying, this was this much of the office and that was that much of the office, or what isn't? And now currently PUC is all in ninety-nine advance, but we have to go forward. But as that asset was purchased by the user payers, then do the one-third, two-thirds, it's just fair for everybody involved. It all goes back to pay the bills for the expansion anyway, so it's just that's my thoughts behind it.
Yep, thank councillor Shank, yeah, I sometimes think we, we split hairs too much sometimes, so is there any other comments or questions? Go ahead councillor Martin.
I agree with councillor Shank. And certainly Sandhurst pays their share of the bills too, there and, and the one-third, two-thirds, you know, they're gonna get their share because of, I mean, with the, with the expansion of the plant, I mean, we're gonna pay that bill too eventually, so I think, again, like, like councillor Shank said, one-third, two-thirds is more than fair. I understand the accrual system and I understand how the money works, and it's not just cash in our hand. I understand even ninety-nine advance avenue isn't, isn't an expense, it's an asset that we purchased. And that's an asset on the books. And forty-five commercial is an asset that we're selling right now. I don't, I don't think I need to say anything much more than I agree with councillor Shank on that. Thanks, mayor.
Thanks councillor Martin, is there anything, any further? We do have a staff recommendation, which I will read. Go ahead councillor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I tried, but when we read the staff recommendation, I just wanna make sure, and I, and I wanna know how council feels on this, is that after the one-third and two-thirds, so one-third is three hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Two-thirds is six hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. I would like the eighty thousand dollars of rent to come out of the six forty-three, three thirty-two, not come off before we do the split.
Councillor Martin.
I would like it not to come out of the one share only. I think that money should come out of the amount first and then divvied up.
Mr. Murphy, the numbers that are presented that basically what we're looking at is the split in the two-thirds, one-third, this nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, am I correct with that? And that doesn't include the eighty thousand dollars of rent?
Through your worship, that's correct, yeah. As councillor Penel pointed out, we've
and that's
from last report.
And that's, that's what's included in the, the recommendation, staff recommendation that was before us tonight.
Through your worship, staff recommendation tonight is just the two-thirds, one-third split without the rent involved. So twenty-ninth, that did have it involved. Today, we've, we've adjusted that to just say two-thirds, one-third with, without consideration of the rent.
Thanks, madam clerk. The recommendation that's before us, we can read that out and we'll see if we put it on the floor and let's see where it goes from there. Are you with that?
Through your worship, councillors can put whatever motion they would like on the floor. There is a recommendation through this report, but there were also several other options presented at the last meeting. And any councillor can craft their own motion as well.
Well, I'll look to the folks that are in front of me here for a recommendation for a resolution, then. Let's see where it goes. Deputy Mayor Cowher.
I put a motion, we go with staff recommendation.
Councillor, deputy mayor Cowher has moved that we go with staff recommendation, and I can read that out once we get a second review wish. Moved by deputy mayor Cowher, seconded by councillor Shank. Staff recommendation that council received for information when answering service report and further that council approved staff recommendation of a split of the proceeds, one-third to town reserves to pay for the purchase of ninety-nine advance and two-thirds to utilities capital reserves for the construction of the maintenance garage at the water pollution control plant. Is there any further comments, questions, concerns? Go ahead councillor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, can I have a recorded vote, please?
Absolutely, I'll put it in the hands of madam clerk. I believe we are, madam clerk.
Ward one councillor Shank?
Yes.
Ward two councillor Hicks? Ward three councillor Penel?
No.
Ward four councillor Norrie?
Yes.
Five councillor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thanks, madam clerk. Moving on, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, who seconded that?
I believe it was councillor Shank.
Thank you.
Moving on, vesting of failed tax sale properties, and I believe Mr. Murphy, you're up for that. You're on, go ahead.
Through your worship, I just wanna bring to council's attention, very last minute, but there is an attachment on the agenda now of all of these properties of an overhead view, so you can see them. I think that'll likely be helpful. A number of them are in a cluster, so it's only just three, three separate photos. But just, just for council's visual and for the public, I guess. But I'm happy to take any questions at this point in time.
Thanks Nathan. Is there any questions of Nathan with respect to his presentation or the report that we have in front of us, including the, the overhead of the tax sales, which was a late entry later, earlier today? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council authorizes the vesting of eleven properties legally described as PIN forty-five, four-five-one-oh-two-dash-zero-two-eight-zero LT, PIN four-five-one-one-four-dash-zero-one-seven LT, PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-five LT, PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-three LT, PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-one-nine LT, PIN one, PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-zero LT, PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-one-eight LT, PIN four-five-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-one LT, and PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-four LT, and PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-seven LT, and PIN four-five-one-one-six-dash-zero-zero-two-six LT. And further that a bylaw be prepared, authorizing the vesting as outlined in the report entitled Vesting of Failed Tax Sale Properties. Moved by deputy mayor Cowher, seconded by councillor Martin. Is there any questions, comments or concerns? Go ahead councillor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna, there was a, a part in this report regarding the implications of the monies that are needed to, to besties. And I, as this wasn't accounted for in the two thousand and twenty-three budget, I'd just like to assure that this is done in the two thousand and twenty-four, not the two thousand and twenty-three year.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Murphy.
Through your worship, that's not a problem. Staff had already thought that may be the case, and it's not a problem at all. Essentially, by the time the bylaws made and we get it over to legal, I don't think that'll be any sooner than that anyway, so perfectly fine on our end as well.
Great, thank you.
Great, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, we'll call a vote, all in favor of the motion. Opposed, motions carried. Budget schedule twenty twenty-four. And there is a bit of an amendment with respect to this that we're going to try and get the information on the twelfth of October budget onto the twenty-sixth of October, if I'm not mistaken, madam clerk, so we can have all that information on one, at one meeting as opposed to two separate meetings?
Yes, through your worship, it came up today that there's concern that the waste diversion information may not be fully ready in its best presentation for October twelfth, so it was requested if we could defer that and try to have, neither of those presentations is expected to be excessively long. We believe it would be a manageable evening to do those two things on the same night, possibly with a schedule of a hard stop on the one item and moving over to the second item for those members of the public that are only interested in, in one half of that discussion.
Great, thanks madam clerk. Is there any questions or comments from madam clerk with respect to the report or the presentation for you? Go ahead councillor Penel.
Thank you through your worship, madam clerk, would that meaning still be held at the SPC?
Through your worship, we may wait to see what it looks like for uptake. We do know that we can live stream from this building, which does allow us to reach more people that way. It's possible if we have a lot of people wanting to speak, we, and we are worried about fire capacity, we could have people move through the building in shifts, if the live streaming is more important than having everybody physically in the room for the presentation, but we can believe the intention is to, to see what the, what the engagement looks like on our online engagement page and make some decisions once we have some preliminary feedback on numbers of people that we might expect to see.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, madam clerk, thanks councillor Penel. Is there any questions or comments for madam clerk? Seeing none, we have a recommendation that council received for information, financial services, budget schedule twenty twenty-four report and further that council approved the proposed dates and times outlined in the report entitled Budget Schedule twenty twenty-four with an amendment to consolidate the October twelfth discussions into the evening of October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor Hicks, seconded by councillor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried, bylaw. First up, bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six zero being a bylaw to provide rules governing the order and procedures of council and committees of the town of Greater Napanee and repeal bylaw two thousand and eight dash fifty-eight as amended. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor, we can have some discussions before the three readings, moved by councillor Penel, seconded by councillor Hicks. Is there any comments or questions or do we have any discussions before we have the three readings and call for the vote? Go ahead councillor Shank.
There's nothing in here about flag bylaws or anything else like this in this whole document, correct?
I don't believe so, no, thanks. Is there anything else? Seeing nothing, read at first, second and finally passed this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-three, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six one being a bylaw to reduce the speed limit of motor vehicles on Kimmit Side Road and Van Leuven Road in the town of Greater Napanee. Moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Penel. Before we do the three readings, is there any comments or questions or discussions we wanna have with respect to this? Seeing none, read at first, second and finally passed this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-three, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. New business, is there any new business anyone wants to bring up this evening? Seeing none, are there any notices of motion? Seeing nuns, statements by members, does anybody I see councillor Norrie has put his hand up, go ahead Bob.
Thank you, your worship. This is my legionite, I guess, just to let everybody know, I've been asked to announce this on behalf of the legion next Tuesday, the nineteenth, at noon, they're unveiling the already seen mural at the back of the legion with a light lunch to follow, all public are welcome, as well as their hoping councillors and the new gardens that are built back there, so just you can attend at noon on the nineteenth during Legion Week, they would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Norrie. Is there any other statements by members? Councillor Shank, go ahead.
This is for Peter. Peter, if you could bring council about the grass cutting on the four oh one coming into the entrance into Napanee, I'm kind of a firm believer, give everything neat and tidy. And there's gonna be, Peter's always already explained to me and also been talking to Jeff Cuthills. And I think there were some, you know, some good news stories here and what they're working towards, try to keep the
Yep, great, thanks. Go ahead Peter, I think you're an extension of Mike's statements by members, so go ahead.
Through your worship.
Yep, great, thanks, thanks Peter and thanks Mike. Go ahead.
The other thing was is our deputy mayor attended the Bass tournament that they had, and talking to some of the anglers that were in that tournament, they said they enjoyed it on the most part, but there were some things that they could always improve on. So if it is held again, some of the larger cities have other functions along, they kinda join with the bass, they, you know, the tent and kids learning and, you know, casting and certain things that the other cities have done, maybe not to a small town like our size, but some of the others, and that's what some of the anglers had said, that if you had the volunteers and everything else, you know, it, it can, you always wanna improve things, all right, it was great what we had, but how can we always improve something to make it that much better? If it happens again here, but Brian was there on, and he can let you know more also.
Thanks councillor Shank. Yep, I know, I know it was a very successful one, and we had a lot of things going on over the course of the weekend as well. I think there were some events that were happening up at the county. Of course, and I know it's not flashy or special, but I think we had our hazardous, hazardous waste on Saturday as well. So it was really encouraging to see a bustling community on the weekend, especially with some good weather, so, including the past tournament, so thanks very much for bringing that up, so go ahead deputy mayor Cowher.
Yeah, just to reiterate, reiterate what Terry said there, we had a lot on the go this weekend, there was the yellow and age studio tours that took place this weekend. There was the touch, touch the truck event at the SPC. Again, the hazardous waste and of course the Bass tournaments, there was lots on the go this weekend. And I agree with Mike, if the Bass tournament comes back next year, there's maybe things we could do to help improve things there as well. I also would like to speak that the Raiders, Napanee Raiders have started their season home opener this Friday, seven thirty. Somebody wants to go and see a good hockey game, it'll be a good game to come out and see. Right, thank you.
Thanks deputy mayor Cowher, go ahead to councillor Shank.
But one, one other thing was is Rob Plumley, and they had the bikes, how many bikes, how many bikers attended that was unbelievable. That was, that was great. They went ahead and stopped at historic sites all the way around, and I had a lot of people that said that was very well attended, and they loved it.
And I sent you to talk about the Celtic bike group that was going to Ottawa, is that it or no? That was a different one?
Cyclists from the county.
Oh, okay, county tourism event, so great, thanks, thanks councillor Shank. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to look for a motion for it to confirm the proceedings of this evening's meeting. Moved by councillor Penel, seconded by councillor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, concerns, we need three readings, read at first, second and finally pass this twelfth day of September twenty twenty-three. All in favor of the motion, opposed, motions carried, motion for adjournment, moved by councillor Martin, seconded by deputy mayor Cowher. There's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried, thanks folks, it's an early evening and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Bye-bye.